All right, good evening. The July 22 meeting of the Nixa City Council will now come to order. Ms. Coffey, roll call please.
Kelly Morris, here. Shawn Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Johnny Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if everyone has had a chance to review the consent agenda, I will accept a motion to remove an item from the consent agenda or approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
First by Mr. Lucas, second by Ms. Graham. Roll call please.
Kelly Morris, yes. Zern Vess.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Johnny Graham.
Yes.
Shawn Lucas.
Yes.
All right, next up. Obviously a reason all of the police officers are in here tonight. So first up is awards and recognition. And the first one, my good buddy Shane Bronham, five years, Nixa PD.
Mayor, Council, Officer Bronham is recognized for his five years of dedicated service to the Nixa Police Department. He is assigned to the Operations Bureau and is a field training officer, helping shape and mentor new officers as they enter our profession. Officer Bronham is a recipient of the Award of Valor for his bravery during an officer-involved shooting. He is focused on drug enforcement and his efforts have led to a significant drug seizure and trafficking case. Known for his professionalism, positive attitude, and willingness to assist whenever needed, he consistently sets a strong example for his peers. Thank you, Officer Bronham, for five years of service.
All right, next up, I think "good buddy" would sound weird, so I'll just say "my good friend," Michelle Trafford, five years with the Nixa Police Department.
Mayor, Council. Officer Trafford is recognized for five years of dedication, resilience, and constant support of the Nixa Police Department. Known for her positive attitude and work ethic, she is always willing to lend a hand and assist her peers regardless of the task. This is obvious as she often volunteers to help with canine training, which often includes wearing the bite suit and receiving bites from canine jack. Recently, she has worked directly with the support supervisor, ensuring vehicles are maintained, uniform needs are met, and helping with administrative tasks. Thank you, Officer Trafford, for your five years of service.
All right, next up, I'll also call you a good friend, Emily Hall, 10 years with the Street Department.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Emily came to us as a utility worker on the Building and Grounds Crew, and she has since moved up to the lead of that crew. Emily and her bunch are responsible for maintaining and mowing over 100 acres of city right-of-way and different facilities for the city. She's always so pleasant, always has a smile on her face, and has a work ethic that's second to none. So I'm very thankful to have Emily on my crew.
This next one's a little bit bigger. Also a good friend, Chad Tennis, 25 years with the Police Department.
Mayor, Council, Major Tennis is a valuable asset to the Police Department. In most career fields, 25 years is considered a lifetime of service. His tenure with the Police Department is impressive and has only been accomplished by a few employees of our department. He's done just about every job within the department and has received a number of awards over the years. Some of those include Award of Merit, Supervisor of the Year, Officer of the Year, and Lifetime Achievement Award. He is an excellent leader who cares about his employees. He holds himself and his staff to the highest standards. Major Tennis is a person I can rely on to do the right thing at the right time for the right reason. I have 100% confidence that he can run the department in my absence, and I'm proud to know and work with Major Tennis and consider him an invaluable colleague. Congratulations on 25 years.
So as the mayor, one thing I get a lot of is complaints on things. I seem to be the complaint box for the city. But all of these people here, I have received compliments on every single one of them. So it's pretty awesome to get more compliments than I do complaints. That's one thing that is just pretty amazing about the city, and it's everyone from Jimmy all the way down. So it's, you know, it's, people can tell that the employees here like working here, and they do treat it like their home. So I truly appreciate all of you for everything you do. All right. And if you guys don't want to stick around for the entire meeting, you're more than welcome to go now. Just so you're not like sitting there wondering, "Can I leave or not?" Thank you all again very much. I should probably start doing that more often, that way, because you can tell they're always wondering, "Can I go? Do I stay?" All right, I will now declare the visitor public hearing open. Do we have anyone that has signed up?
Whitney Kisan.
Whitney.
Mayor and Council, good evening. How are y'all doing?
Wonderful.
I don't know why I just asked that, because I don't think you're allowed to answer, but.
Yeah, we can.
Oh, good. How are you doing?
We're well.
Good, good. Glad to hear that. I promised some people that I would take the entire five minutes today. So I'm gonna just stand up here for a minute and think. I'm just kidding, I'm not gonna do that. I actually wanted to give you guys a quick recap on Sucker Days. It's been a couple months. We've been busy, we've been trying to get all the things finalized, but Sucker Days looked a little different this year, and it, in my estimation, was still wildly successful, great festival. I don't know if you all, I saw some of you there. I don't know how much you were able to spend there. I spent the whole time there, and it was great. It was perfect weather, couldn't have asked for better weather. Tons of family event stuff, the live music was phenomenal. And I think us taking it back down to just two days was very helpful to the community, so that we weren't competing with high school graduation and church and things like that. So it was a really great event. What I wanted to highlight for this year actually was, we attempted something a little different this year. We wanted to do some sharing with other nonprofits, so we invited other nonprofits to support us at Sucker Days and volunteer, because we are always shy of volunteers that we need, and we still were shy of volunteers that we needed. But even with that being said, this year, Sucker Days was able to share over $8,000 with 17 different nonprofits that are all local to our area. So that's incredibly, in my opinion, very successful, great collaboration. It's a great event that supports many different entities across our community, and that doesn't even take into account the $3,000 of scholarships that get shared with high school students. So, and I'm sure you guys already know about all that, but I just wanted to kind of just talk about that part of the success of the event. The festival, of course, is great. We had tons of people out, but being able to share with other nonprofits was a little different this year. We don't usually see that much share, and so we wanted to try it and see kind of how it went, and we'll revisit it next year as we do every year. But that was the big success for me this year in Sucker Days, was being able to share so much money with other nonprofits. So we appreciate the support of the city. I don't think the community will ever know how much the city does to support this festival, just as far as police presence and moving big, heavy things around and fixing broken electricity, and if it rains, clearing drains. I mean, the city's always there on call. They're really quick to respond, so that's something I just want to make sure I publicly say thank you, because that happens every year, and I don't think anyone knows how much this, I know I didn't know before this position, how much the city helps with this festival, so thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any about Sucker Days.
Any questions?
Great.
You guys did a great job. It was.
So did you.
I had to miss some of it because of graduation, but it was just, it was awesome.
It always is awesome, and we appreciate your guys' partnership. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Whitney, Whitney, did you ever get an approximate amount of people that attended?
So we're struggling with PlaceR.AI right now. They apparently had some sort of update, and they gave us an approximate of about 20,000, but they didn't used to do that. So I was like, well, can we give the approximates from the previous years? Because we didn't get approximates from previous years, and they approximated about 20,000. So I'm saying that I think we had about the same amount of people as we expected to have. I expected it to go down a little bit because we dropped Sunday, and it prob, I don't know where they get their approximates from, because it's all cellphone data, and I think they tie in all the kids that are there as well. So they say, oh, this is how many people are on the street, so we're gonna approximate, you know, from the cellphone data. So it's not a great answer, because we don't have a great answer, but I think safe to say we had around what we had last year, probably. There was a lot of people there over the two days. I was happy with it, considering I was expecting it to go down a little since we lost Sunday. So, yeah. Any other question? Sorry, I walked away so fast. Apologize. I'll wait now.
I mean, you still got 56 seconds.
Yup.
I will say, you know, honestly duplicating what you said, most people don't realize the amount of work that the chamber puts into it and the volunteers, and the fact that you were able to get so many other organizations come help is amazing, but it also kind of makes you wonder how in the world did we do it beforehand, which we all know. Sunday morning calls and stuff like that, and, I mean, people just, they just show up. So the amount of work that goes into it is just absolutely insane, so we appreciate everything you do.
Well, thank you.
Here you go, all right. Anybody else? All right, we didn't have anybody else signed up, but if you would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, feel free to do so at this time. All right, fair enough. I will now declare the visitor public hearing closed. And next up on the agenda are the first and second reading of Council Bill 2025-23.
Emergency ordinance reading Council Bill Number 2025-23, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa amending the 2025 annual budget in the amount of $246,674.19 to appropriate funds for information technology services and declaring the emergency pursuant to Section 311F of the City Charter, presenting as City Administrator Jimmy Lyles.
Mayor, Council, as our city and our community and organization continue to grow in a rapid way, we find ourselves in a situation where we need to ensure that our IT services and technology grow along with that. And as part of that, we decided it is time to review our current IT services that we currently have and also review other potential IT providers to ensure that we are selecting or having a company alongside of us that is going to grow at the same rate that along with us, as well as be able to focus on specific governmental needs. So during that review process, we were able to identify a company, Forward Slash Technologies, as a provider that not only meets our current needs, but we also believe is well-equipped to scale with us in the future. Forward Slash has extensive experience working with municipalities and possesses experience in several key areas that are critical to operations, including Police Department, Utility Building, Public Works, just to name a few. Now, they do offer a comprehensive solution that ensures system reliability, cybersecurity, and technical support that is tailored to each department that we have. Later tonight, you will see a resolution before you for an approval of a merger-to-ear contract with Forward Slash. We will talk a little more about that when we get to that. What's before you right now is a budget amendment that would allow us to pay for the services if council were entered into that contract agreement, that contract with Forward Slash. The budget about, the budget, sorry, excuse me, the budget amendment amount is $246,674.19. Of that amount, $28,059.43 is what's considered some of the onboarding costs, which that company will actually come in, be physically present, and help with not only onboarding their services, but also offboarding our current IT provider's services. So there will be a bit of a transition period, and so which is why staff tonight is asking for the full amount of the contract to be part of the budget amendment. You'll see that $246,000 is the full amount of a one-year service agreement with Forward Slash. That will allow us, the funds, to enter to that agreement, but also allow our current IT budget to be used to pay our current IT provider for offboarding services, as well as allow us some money to address the unforeseen issues as we change providers. It's really hard at this point to judge apples and apples, because, you know, you have one provider that provides certain things and certain services and softwares, and until a new company comes in, we tell them to have a good grasp of what those services and some of those costs will be. So tonight, we're asking for a budget amendment for a full amount of the contract to ensure we have enough budget to handle all of those unforeseen contingencies that we may go into. As mentioned, it is a first and second reading tonight, and that is in pursuit to our Home Rule Charter, Section 311. It does allow for the emergency designation to be able to read both readings in the group tonight. I will say that the reasons that we are asking for that emergency exception would be a couple of things. One of those being that the city's in a position right now to which we have two major construction projects going on. We have the City Hall remodel that you've probably seen all the stuff here on site already. The demolition is already began on that remodel, and so actual construction and infill will begin shortly. And it feels important that we have an IT company in place and onboard before we actually start that construction process to ensure that we are thinking of the appropriate IT needs so that providers will be applying to us. The same thing goes for the Police Department. We're getting a new building in the Police Department. As a matter of fact, we think of construction companies entering the first week of August, so we'll be entering into a contract soon, and groundwork will happen soon with the Police Department. Again, it feels important that we have an IT provider here and under contract before that construction begins to make sure that we have their input as we build out the new Police Department as well. And then also I'll mention that, you know, we do have some immediate upgrades that need to take place, and we want to ensure that those critical updates are done quickly, so that we're not delaying any of those updates that could cause potential risk to other city operations. So for those reasons, we are asking tonight, the Council, look at the emergency exception, can be first and second reading, and it's staff's recommendation that the Council considers budgeting. We have any extra questions?
Any questions?
Jimmy, could you remind us how much we already budgeted for IT from last year? So this is an increase to it, right?
Yes, it is. It is an increase. While we currently have budgets, so services provided by Forward Slash are higher, slightly higher than what we are currently getting from providers, so it's an increase in yearly amount. Now, again, we don't know the exact, because we can't compare hours to hours yet, but, you know, the hourly services are very close, and we'll cover a little more of that during the contract discussion, but it's literally like five hours, something like that, I think, of return payment for those services. But there's also a level of other things within those managed services, again, we cover the contract, that are, some of those we are being third-party for, some of them we're paying our current provider for. So as that new company comes in, a lot of those things will be incorporated within their managed services.
And that was a really good question, Mr. Vess. One of the reasons that, and I've actually kind of been harping on this for about three years, maybe more than that actually, it's very hard to budget managed IT services when you have kind of a break-fix solution, and you're buying more of a bank of hours, and then anytime you go over that, you have to pay that additional amount, versus a true managed IT solution where they monitor and manage the network. And, because, you know, I did this once in my life, and the way that a managed IT company actually makes money is if they are doing their job so well that they really don't have to come on-site, they don't have to spend much time on your network because they have it running healthy and secure. And so that was kind of always very, something that I wanted to look at doing. And it really, you know, part of the whole, I guess, due diligence process that started ways back was really looking to someone who has more industry expertise, that actually knows the systems that we use, because there's a lot, I mean, you know, between all the different departments, and, you know, what the Police Department uses versus what Public Works uses versus what, you know, Finance and HR, and there's just a whole lot of things that are different, and finding people who actually understand not just what the software is and know the backend of it, but the actual processes of each employee. So when they get on a phone call with an employee, they don't automatically kind of throw their hands up like, "Well, I don't really know how you use this," so, I mean. up like, well, I don't really know how you use this. So I mean, it, can you turn it off and turn it back on again? Um, cause that's not always the right, you know, the right solution. Um, I, I personally think, um, even with the increase in the budget for this, um, it's one of those things that we will be able to get pretty close on budgeting yearly. Um, obviously, you know, hardware and there's additional software that come up, that's, that's outside of normal scope. So that's stuff that you, you're going to have to purchase kind of like, I mean, you get it. If your computer goes bad, you gotta buy a new one. Um, it'll be a lot easier to budget just because we kind of know what the main contract cost is and a lot of those hours that we're paying extra for now at that hourly rate are included. Um, and you know, this company was also pretty impressive on, and I'm not honestly knocking who we had, um, because really not all managed IT companies are created equal. Um, some specialize in certain things that some don't and finding one that specializes in municipal government was something that was kind of important to me and, and Cindy was with me when we approached them. I, I played completely stupid and started trying to, trying to say a name of something that, it was the SCADA system with our water towers. And I was like just hinting around at what it might be and they were like, are you referring to a SCADA system? I'm like, thank you. Okay. So that was step one and, um, but just being able to have that, that expertise is going to be, even if it was, I think more per hour to me, the amount of, you know, downtime and frustrations that our employees have dealing with a lot of that downtime and trying to literally explain their entire job, um, so one issue can be fixed. Uh, it's definitely kind of hard to put a price tag on that. Um, and I'm sure, sure Whitehill over in the PD can, can, can vouch for that too. But no, but I get what you're saying. That is, it is a huge difference. Um, but in the grand scheme of things, like what we've paid over the last couple of years, it's, I mean, it's up and down. You just don't know what it's going to be and, and you know how I feel about entering into contracts that are longer than our terms. I don't necessarily like doing that. With this, it's no longer back to that, you know, break fix solution. It's more of, we're having a whole nother division inside the city where we have a whole bunch of employees that know our system and will work on it, but we're not paying them benefits. We're not, I mean, not worrying about what they're doing whenever they're, you don't see them. Um, you know, are they sitting at their desk playing PlayStation or are they actually monitoring the network and things like that? So, um, you know, the, the ultimate benefits of this, I think truly outweigh the, the additional cost and all it takes is, you know, one thing with, with hardware or software or security to all of a sudden, we have a lot bigger bill than we ever even planned to have throughout the year. Um, so that was kind of what really led down this path and, and the one thing that I think, that I do want to touch on is the, the words emergency ordinance, um, because it, it sounds bad. Anytime you say emergency, it, it kind of seems like there's something big going on and we gotta do something now. You really don't want the normal, and this is something that we had discussed as well, um, you really don't want the normal process of, of an ordinance when you're doing a contract like this because of that, the switch over time between the old and the new and things that might happen. It's better to just, yep, it's done. We're good and we can move forward.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I didn't mean it to be that way. Actually should have started off with, I'm, I'm pretty happy that we're being progressive and, and-
Oh, no. I planned on saying all that anyway, so.
I do feel like I've, I've been here long enough to, to witness some of the issues that we've had with being the break fix technology and so if I could just was kind of looking for a fill what our old plan was so that when we kind of got to the contract, we could justify the value pretty easy, pretty quick, I guess.
It was all I was looking for. So a better question might've been what have we been paying? So what are we budgeting? But, but I can-
It's been, yeah, it's been a, a hodgepodge of numbers, honestly. Um, and that was one thing that I'd kind of asked about back, I don't, I wasn't even the mayor yet because I, those, I, I just, those contracts make me nervous, um, just because those companies, like they also do have full-on managed IT customers and who's going to be the priority? And, and not that we would have not entered into one of these contracts with, with them, but it was just one of those, we had to do what's right or best for the employees and the taxpayers' money, um, and the taxpayers really, cause you know, we deal with a lot of their stuff and having it, someone who actually has the industry knowledge. Um, but yeah, I don't know if we have a full, I can't remember. I, I know I had a breakdown of it over the last couple of years, but that's putting you on the spot.
Now, like Mr. Lyles said, it, it's hard to know because we, we did pay our provider for certain services and then we paid separately for other things that will likely be included in this contract with this new vendor. So it's hard, it's hard to really compare. Um, I can say though, that just, just the payment to the IT, um, service provider is in excess of a hundred thousand dollars per year, just for, just for their managed services, not any, any extra stuff.
Not any hardware and, and. A little very long explanation, but I had planned on saying that anyway. So I was like, you just teed me up is all you did. Thank you.
I'm sure we have enough 25-year-plus employees that could tell us what, what he used to write it all on paper.
Yeah.
And now they have seven apps to get through the same day. So I'm, I'm sure there's plenty of use for an IT person. If not today, tomorrow.
Yeah.
So I, I get that.
Um, again, I think it's hard to compare at this point, but I will kind of break down our flexibility for IT stuff for 2024, um, for each provider. Uh, you know, we have hardware costing $24, $39,000. Most of the services are $41,000, labor service is $122,000. Um, hit software to different channels, $100,000 that year for specific projects for $500,000, internet costs $40,000. So that's kind of a breakdown of our IT costs for 2024. So we do spend a lot of money on cybersecurity and IT needs. Um, but again, that's probably the closest I can get you as far as that comparison at this point.
Yep. Any other questions? I won't answer at this time. If that makes you guys feel better. This has been a long, long deal. Mr. Woodman, do, um, with it being first and second, do I do a public hearing on both or?
You only need to read it once. So you can open the public hearing, close it and then proceed to a vote if that's what you want to do.
Okay. Perfect. Well, and that'll be after the public hearing. If you guys think it's something you want to talk about, we can do that as well. Um, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Council Bill 2025 dash 23. Fair enough. I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Fair enough. All right. If nothing further, I will accept a motion for Council Bill 2025 dash 23.
I'll make the motion.
Second. First by Mr. Vess, a second by Mr. Peterson. Roll call, please.
Senator Vess?
Yes.
Dr. Ian Graham?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Next up will be Council Bill 2025 dash 22.
Second reading Council Bill number 2025 dash 22, an ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa amending chapter 117, article four, section 11790, part two of the Nixa City Code for the purpose of clarifying and standardizing the table of approved uses as to pet grooming and kenneling businesses presenting is planning and development director Scott Gobby.
Mayor, council, good evening. Um, before you is two land uses, um, that are very similar in nature. Um, they are kennels with outdoor runs and without outdoor runs and also pet grooming services with outdoor runs and without outdoor runs. Um, as the code currently s- uh, shows, um, there is kind of a conflict between how these two read because kennels with outdoor runs, which would be the more intense land use because you're having, um, pets outside as part of the kenneling process, requires a special use permit in neighborhood commercial. And then pet grooming services without outdoor runs also requires a special use permit in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. In theory, it should be pet grooming services with outdoor runs that has a special use permit requirement. Um, so that is one aspect of this, um, code change that we are looking to correct. Um, the other aspect is that our definition section actually has these two land uses together. Um, so we are looking to also combine those. Um, based off of the discussion that occurred during the first read, um, staff has prepared an amendment, um, for you to consider, uh, that would include removing the special use permit, um, requirement for pet grooming and kenneling with outdoor runs in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. Um, again, the intent is to remove that option. So therefore with outdoor runs wouldn't be allowed in the neighborhood commercial zoning district at this time. Um, the intent is to allow staff to go back and kind of beef up the special use permit, um, code language. So that way we have, um, criteria to review in certain, in these situations. Um, so again, that is, uh, an option in front of you tonight. Um, staff does recommend approval. And either way, with or without the amendment. So this, this, the amendment was based off of the discussions that we had during the first reading. So if you have any further questions, um, we'd be happy to answer them. I also did research, uh, state requirements for pet grooming. So I'm prepared for that conversation again if.
So does this, um, will this affect the business that's wanting to go in on Main Street?
No, they are not requesting outdoor runs. So they would still be in the, the proposed amendment, they would be allowed by right.
Okay.
They wouldn't have to do a special use permit.
And since you did the research, is there anything else you want to tell us about?
Uh, in fact, uh, if the facility is just doing grooming services and not, uh, having animals stored or stored, uh, kennelled overnight, sorry, not the appropriate word there. Um, if animals are being kept overnight, um, that is when the facility is required to be licensed by the state as, um, they would actually call it at that point, a commercial kennel operation. Um, but if it is just a grooming operation where no pets are being stored, they're actually not required to be licensed by the state. Um, so therefore there is additional requirements that based off the size of the dog is there's a whole formula that you measure out your dog from head, from nose to tail and there's a formula that then tells you how many, uh, square footage each, um, pet is supposed to have in order to be kept on site. And it's based off of your overall square footage of your facility. So therefore that's how you get your calculations of how many dogs or pets that can be kept. And that also transfers to the amount of space that they need for exercise, which would be the outdoor runs. But again, these are state, uh, requirements and regulations.
Now, do you measure to where the tail starts or where the tail ends?
I'm glad you asked, Mayor.
If the tail curves.
He has to straighten it out.
Depends on where they keep it stored, isn't that?
Sounds like another win for Courtney to me.
The minimum space requirement is calculated by taking the length of the dog in inches measured from the tip of its nose to the base of its tail.
Base and space.
Plus six inches.
Oh.
Times itself and then dividing the product by 144 to convert the square footage.
That's a lot of-
I can continue.
This will be another time I opened a can of worms. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Godby. I appreciate you.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. That was a lot. All right. No other questions. I will open up the public hearing for Council Bill 2025 dash 22. I think I will close the public hearing.
So for council, um, I guess the question comes down to, do we want to allow, uh, curmudgeon kennels with outdoor runs to have that access with a special permit or do we want to take away that option of having a special permit to allow those in the neighborhood commercial? And it's just for neighborhood commercial. So that's what we're going to decide if we want to do the, the original ordinance or do we want to do it with the amendment? Does anybody have any preferences on that?
I'd be more interested in the amendment so that it was a special permit and then they can kind of figure that out. Sure.
If we do the amendment, then it doesn't allow a special permit to allow that to happen. They would just not be allowed.
Until they get-
Until they come back with a new special permit policy. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, it's a, it is kind of a, a tough one. I could, I can probably assure you that if, uh, one was going to open in neighborhood commercial and it was in, you know, there's a lot of houses around you, you're going to get a lot of pushback on, um, I mean, even the special use permit or however it's done.
Well, it just depends on how big the business is and how many dogs based off the state requirements. I mean, honestly, in a neighborhood commercial, I don't think it's going to be able to have a huge facility that had, have a big area. So I don't know that we're talking a lot of outdoor exposure.
Yeah. And that's a, that's a good point. So on a special use permit, hypothetically speaking, um, man, someone comes in and they want to get a special use permit and they, in the beginning, they only plan on having their run be a certain size and maybe a couple, up to four dogs. Um, but they have the room to grow. If they are to expand that, do they have to come back for another special use permit or does it still cover them? So if they were going to widen it and lengthen it and have more dogs?
Uh, it should be covered under the existing special use permit granted, um, again, but it's still the, the overall facility size that is part of the actual building determine how much room they can expand outside.
Okay.
And with the, the current special, special use permit requirement, that does give staff the ability to put conditions on. And you, so we just don't have a standardized, um, thing to follow them or determine to kind of guide us in this situation. So it's good to have something there so that we're, we're assessing each one the same.
And so you said that you, you know, approve it either way as the subject matter expert on this now, um, which way is more ideal?
Uh, I believe that the, the special use permit should be required in neighborhood commercial without door runs. Um, because staff still has the ability to kind of review and approve stuff and we do have the intent to give up our special use permit process or code language in the future. Um, so it is intended at that point. We just may give you the option to review, but at this time, there is some concerns on that.
So that leads me to another question. Basically, if we voted without the option for the special use permit, once the special use permit language is updated, um, then if we wanted to offer that, we'd have to come back and vote to put that back on this. Is that correct?
Then we'd be the ask for the back end of that. Would the option be-
I don't know. I guess then why would we remove it if we're going to try to add it back on? I mean, staff's still going to look at the special use permit language and, and update it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if they want to add it back on later, then why would we want to bring it back to vote on it again? Unless we don't want to add it back on. That, that's, that's where we're at with figuring out which way we want to go with this.
And for clarification again, which department did you get those regulations from?
I don't think that's part of, it's part of the K9 rule prevention act. That was adopted as part of the, um, the state's very under- That was adopted as part of the state's very under.
It's the Department of Agriculture.
I'm sorry.
It's the Department of Agriculture.
So it is state statute or is it just like a regulation?
I believe it's a licensing requirement by the Department of Agriculture. They come in and actually do inspections and everything. And they could lose their license and if they did not follow the standards.
They inspect the facility, run any, make sure it's compliant with the requirements of the neighborhood community.
And that's what we're wanting to use to base our special use permit off of, is those requirements? Or are you?
It would be kind of, since that stuff is already regulated, are you going to concentrate it on different aspects of the operation? More likely than maybe not.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
So we got to decide which way we're going to go with this.
Yep.
I mean, if they're going to update the special use permits, I don't want to have to go back and redo this personally. But on the flip side of that, do we want to allow outdoor runs in neighborhood commercial at all?
That would be the question.
I'll be honest, I've never dropped a dog off to be groomed in my life, so I don't know how long they're there. I don't know if they need to use any facilities. So I guess that's what I was thinking. If somebody had a nice facility, you dropped a dog off for a few hours, they could have a place to put a dog out as long as it was regulated by the city. Where this, I think one time I talked about nothing after hours, no overnight stays, like that kind of stuff, just a place. So if somebody had a nice facility, they would have a place to put a dog outside or something for that. But you could probably even limit how long it could be outside. And if someone has to regulate that stuff, but still, I guess that's what I was thinking of the option for. But I'm indifferent. I still don't want a dog that goes to a groomer, so I don't expect them to go to a groomer.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the square footage regulations would be on your dog.
Well, I also think it's down to the kenneling part. I think it's more of the kenneling part that would be the outdoor run because if you're going to leave your dog overnight, they're going to let them out to run off some energy, stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
I don't think they just let them stay outside constantly though.
I'm indifferent.
That's correct.
So I do kennel my dogs sometimes and a factor for me is outdoor activity. And because I'm paying this person to take care of my dog. And if I wanted them to stay in a cage, I would just stay home. So having them to go outside in a run is very important.
Yeah. And to me, those places don't need to be in neighborhood commercial because there's not one that's quiet.
No.
It's constant, all day long.
I agree, Mayor. I don't think it should be.
Yeah. And honestly, the, the grooming side of things, they don't normally, my dogs get groomed and they don't let them outside after they're groomed. Because they want them, yeah, they want you to smell how good they did and.
I think we'd get more complaints if it was neighborhood commercial versus, because they'd be calling all the time, these dogs are barking. And then that would also get more calls for service for the police department for barking dogs. And I just see it more negative impact than a positive impact.
There's a kennel close to my house and I never hear it.
That the one on Ozark?
Mm-hmm.
That's a ways away from your house, man.
Yeah, but I never hear when I drive by it either.
Yeah. Yeah, their kennels are a little, I got one by my office in Springfield. And I, every time I drive by, they go nuts. So probably, that one's a little, it's got more trees around it too, so they probably don't see a lot of the,
Sure.
the stuff. Yeah, I'm, I mean.
I'm indifferent on it.
Don't hold it up for me. Just if everybody's good, just pass it with no outdoor runs at all and we'll move on. If it becomes an issue, we'll go after the special permit at that time. Let someone come in and request it.
So it sounds like Z, Zer is making a motion for the amendment, is what it sounds like.
Okay, so I'll second that. Okay. All right, so I have a motion for the amended Council Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. A first by Mr. Vess and a second by Mr. Peterson. Roll call, please.
If you're doing the amendment separate from the bill, you would just do an all in favor.
Oh, okay.
Oh, good.
Now, we can do it all together.
That's fine.
You would just change your wording a little bit.
I think we're good. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries.
Now you'll say.
So now, I'll accept the motion for Council Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two.
And I'll make that.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A first by Mr. Lucas, a second by Ms. Morris. Roll call, please.
Senator Vess?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Johnny Graham?
Sure.
Kelly Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that one's done.
That one got a little confusing for a second. Okay.
It's almost like a tail wagging the dog.
Yeah. All right, moving on to the resolution section. First up, Mr. Coffey, please read Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Forward Slash Technology LLC for information technology services, presenting as city administrator Jimmy Lyles.
Mayor, I'm, I'm Mayor Council. Mayor Council, we're managing a contract that discussed a little bit earlier. We did the budget. This contract would be the Forward Slash standard contract for IT services. To dive a little more into the contract, this, this will include some key elements, including managed services support, which will provide us standard basically help desk from seven AM to six PM Monday to Friday. And obviously, they will also provide some support after hours as well, if, if that is needed. Also covers cybersecurity services, including one source security for up to a hundred and fifty devices, which we cover all the devices that we carry to the lab and then, and then some additional if needed. Also includes risk management services, there is continuity and disaster recovery planning, which is I know is something that, you know, the mayor had been talking about as a, as a big need for our organization. So that would be incorporated in this contract. As well as email protection and archiving, which will provide comprehensive email security and digital archive solutions. As well as infrastructure security and management, which would be oversight for current firewall systems and mobile device management. Of course, procurement, procurement, can't talk to me. Cloud and backup management, which I think is another E aspect that they have, especially in terms of procurement. Because they can provide the service in which they have additional computers that can utilize or in stock. So it would be an instant switch where currently now we're having to order and wait for those to come in and process and replace. Nice thing about this contract and the services they provide is they will have on the shelf computers and devices, which should be on a computer now and instantly available that is ready to, you know, for current. So I thought, I felt that was a pretty good service that was offered by Forward Slash. They also offer reduced labor rates for management services. I mentioned earlier, that's ninety-five dollars an hour for the core management services. This agreement is for an initial three-year term, which kind of addresses what the mayor was talking about earlier. Just try not to get too long out. And it's kind of in the direction from council in the past. It's a, a long-term contract, you can go on long terms, I think, from council and mayor. So we have a negotiating agreement for slash to do a three-year contract that will allow with, allow two-year, two, one-year automatic renewals if we so choose to initiate that. I've also mentioned, along with that initial cost that we talked about earlier with that budget. The agreement does include an annual increase for years two and three, eleven percent. So there will be an increase there. And then if we continue on to years four and five, the increase would be additional eight percent per year, which will cover, of course, additional expenses, costs of, things like that. So that's a, a big overview of, of the contract. Be happy to answer any questions or any questions.
Any questions?
I, I will also mention, I don't think I mentioned it before. Currently, the current department here offers some AV services and things like that. This will also, those things will also be offered by Forward Slash in this contract. So it's not just their IT services, they also offer AV solutions. I think it's also going to be important for, not just what we currently have, three models and future waste department and all the things. So I just want to mention that, AV services.
How many references did you have for Forward Slash as far as other municipalities that you were able to talk to? And how did those conversations go?
I'm not sure. Senator Ross handled that because she contacted her first, of course, in this project.
I think there were about four references that we contacted. One, I called and contacted Rala. And they were just going, they were just finishing up their transition. And they spoke very highly of Forward Slash. So there was four probably total. But Rala, I mean, I, I called them and talked to them specifically, but asked a lot of hard questions and they were very complimentary.
Perfect.
I just ran a little bit of math on the, on the percentages that you talked about in years two, three, and then four and five. Because when I read this, it says point eleven percent, so I was thinking it was less than one percent. But based off of what you stated, from the time that we entered into this agreement till the end of year five, that agreement would go up almost ninety-eight thousand dollars. Okay? Thanks. Yeah.
And those management services, but again, that's going to cover a lot of the acres, I think, as well. And some of like management services and software services.
Just making sure we're comfortable with that.
And it is stated here with an automatic two-year renewal unless terminated with appropriate notice. And that is after the three years, then.
Yeah, we can make a notification to them if they have a three-year contract. If not, we're giving them an automatic, no notification, it's automatically. And I will say that of course, it's a company for us, but we will obviously be doing that throughout this three-year period of the contract. Ensure that they're meeting our needs as well.
And as far as support, is that onsite or, I know in initial it will be, right?
Yeah, after the initial onboarding, most of it will be done virtually or, you know, connecting virtually. Maybe on, for onsite if needed. There will be some additional expenses if that's needed as far as travel expenses, things like that. That's pretty high, I think. And I think their success rate for virtual.
Was ninety-six percent.
Ninety-six percent.
Is that one of the questions that you had asked as well, Cindy?
Uh, yes. Also, one thing that I thought was very important in this decision was the help desk knowledge that they offered, the experience for the people that answer the phones. They're not just beginning their careers.
Yeah, they're tier-two technicians. They're not tier-one.
They're network technician, they're network engineers. They've had a minimum of five years' experience in, within a network. And they were very knowledgeable, knowledgeable. That's why they said it was like a ninety-four percent success rate. And usually the other six percent was like hardware fail, where the computer died. And the one thing that they did, as Mr. Lyles mentioned, was they said that we can have a new computer up and going in our office within four, four hours. It'll already be loaded and ready to go. So they'll, they'll stock us what, what we need. They'll find out exactly what our requirements are and they'll stock it. And they'll have it ready to go within four hours.
And one of the biggest differences whenever you get into an, an actual true RMM tool, which is the remote monitoring and management, is they're constantly seeing the health of the machines. So they have a, their NOC, which is a network operations center and has all these monitors and all this stuff. And it shows the health of every machine, every server. And so, you know, say, Mr. Kraus calls in and he's having an issue. Unless he needs to show them how to recreate the issue, they go in and work on it without anybody even knowing. Like, they don't see them active on the machine. It's all, most of it's done on the backend. But if he has to recreate it, then they'll talk through it with them controlling the screen in front of him. But they don't have to go sign into a website and go to a go-to session or a log me in or whatever it is and give them access and then have them take over their machine and not be able to work while it's getting fixed. It's, it's something that's, and a lot of that stuff, they can see, you know, monitoring the health of it. They might need to do patches or updates, things like that, that they'll do after hours. Or they'll have it run and then the machine will reboot after hours. So it's not messing with productivity.
One thing they did offer is that asset management, like you're talking about. They come in and they inventory everything we have. And they have the ages and the models and all the things. And then they, they suggest a twenty percent changeover each year so that you're getting rid of the old stuff and, but only in incremental parts. So that it's not like half of our computers go out at one, one year and we were out a whole bunch of money. They, they do like a twenty percent changeover each month, each year. That's what they recommend.
Easier to budget, yeah.
Yeah, it's easier to budget and then they keep track of our age and, and what, what we actually have. It's asset management.
Any other questions? Those were good ones. All right. No other questions. I will open up the public hearing for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from council? Nothing further, I'll accept the motion for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, second by Mrs. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. All right. Next up, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven?
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a cost share agreement with Extreme Property Holdings LLC for the construction of a regional detention basin, presenting as project facilitator Justin North.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So last month, council authorized Mr. Lyles to solicit bids to, or for the construction of the police department building. Part of that design of the police station includes a regional detention basin just south of the property. So this basin will be utilized to handle the stormwater runoff from both the police station, extreme exteriors, future headquarters, and additional future development of Mr. Lampe's property. Given that this is a regional detention basin, the cost share was put together in conjunction with Mr. Lampe to aid in the construction of the basin. So this cost share includes two items. The first being a twenty cent, or twenty percent reimbursement to Mr. Lampe for the construction of the basin up to thirty thousand dollars. So this twenty percent reflects the area. The police station contributes to the basin. The police station property is five point, three, four acres to Mr. Lampe's twenty-three point five two. So that shakes out to about twenty percent. Um, the second item of the, is a reimbursement for the actual cost of a geosynthetic liner, uh, up to a hundred and fifty thousand. So this liner is placed in the detention basin, uh, due to its proximity to an existing, um, sinkhole, uh, close by. Uh, the liner will prevent stormwater seepage into the rim of the sinkhole, which could cause destabilization and cause it to expand. So without that liner, um, the sinkhole has the potential to, uh, destabilize and expand towards the police station site, which would negatively impact the integrity of the building and parking lot. This is part of the budget that Navigate put together for the police station. Uh, they have been actively tracking costs related to police department development, and this cost has been, um, factored into our contingency, um, overages for the development. Staff recommends approval of this cost share. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
How close is that sinkhole to the property that we talked about? How it could cause integrity to the building and the parking lot that we're going to build?
So, um, in the sinkhole analysis, it's referred to as sinkhole D, which, if you go to, um, page three, uh, twenty-nine, it'll show the locations.
I was trying to find it, so, thank you.
You may type it in at the, the top, it'll.
You said D?
Yeah, so if you zoom out a little bit.
Oh, I haven't gotten that part yet.
Okay.
So, sinkhole D is at the bottom there. That touches the police station property, the detention basin is going to go to the right of that.
Oh, there it is.
Uh, you can kind of see the contour lines, they, where they almost look like a U shape to the right, heading south. Um, that's where that detention basin will go. Um, D and sinkhole A are connected, and so if D becomes destabilized in a way, it's possible that, um, that destabilization could go towards A. So this liner will basically make it where that doesn't happen. Um, it limits the seepage and allows it to go through the designed outlet structure of the basin, so we can avoid, uh, seeping into D.
And you stated there is a cost share with, uh, Mr. Lampy as far as, uh, the twenty percent?
Yeah.
But not on the liner itself?
So, yeah, we're going to, uh, cover the full cost of that liner. Um, with this being regional, whenever he develops his property, um, he, I guess, had the option to put a basin closer to his, um, facility, uh, that wouldn't have affected us, but with us being so close, we decided that regional would be, um, a good option, I think, for the both of us to reduce costs, and that's kind of how that shook out.
And so, due to, you know, our facility, um, that's the reason why we're having to foot the entire cost of the liner. It, you know, if, if, if we weren't there, then Mr. Lampy probably wouldn't have to use the liner
Yeah, correct.
for our basin. But because of where it is, and with our building, our proximity, then that is the reason why we're doing the full, amount of the, uh, the liner.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orf. All right, if there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from council? Nothing else, I will accept the motion for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
I'll make the motion.
Second. First by Ms. Graham, second by Mr. Peterson, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. All right. Start with staff, anything else from staff?
Hey, Jim, just wanted to remind you guys we're doing Movies in the Park this Saturday night. Um, we're doing Spickable Need Four, we're going to start a dusk, and then back to the end of the evening before, and so a lot of people will see it.
Matt, when is National Night Out?
Uh, August fifth, from six to eight.
Don't steal my thunder. Yes, it is August fifth, six to eight. Um, it's going to be very traditional as to format that we've done in the past, which would be swimming at the pool. We're exploring an option of, um, hot dogs, I think, maybe this year, grilling some hot dogs and having a little bit of food. Uh, and then, uh, of course, having our equipment and our officers out there to meet and greet the public. And we're going to get a better sound system so the mayor can, uh, give a wonderful proclamation.
Not a Toys R Us megaphone. And was that your way of asking us if we're going to cook hot dogs for you guys? Because we'll do it.
No, I kind of figured I'd be roped into that one, so.
Oh, okay, cool.
Yeah, big grill.
It is.
All right. As you may be aware, we've been operating the planning and zoning commission short line member. So we currently have, uh, an interest form on our website that, uh, those that are interested in serving community can fill out and have to be considered for, uh, fill that seat, but the form is live until the end of the day of Friday. For those that are interested out there, you can go to the latest dot com and find that form and fill out.
How many have we had so far?
I think we currently have four, maybe five.
That's good.
Which means Appointments Committee, we need to schedule a meeting for you guys to interview.
I have some questions for the mayor.
We don't have to do that right now, just as a
Yep.
Put that on your radar, we'll have to schedule a meeting.
Um, yeah, because I got some questions.
Okay, fair enough. Um, we don't have to do the scheduling of the meeting in an open meeting, do we? We can schedule it and then announce it. Cool, okay, so you guys can send out an e, we'll send out an email or something, once we have a chance to discuss all that. Perfect. All right, anything else from staff? Anything else from Mr. Rousseau? Didn't have any big updates for us this week? All right, swing check. Anything else from council? All right. If nothing else, thank you all very much, meeting adjourned.